Commissioner Hubbard.
Here.
Commissioner Jacob.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
And Commissioner Brandy.
Here.
And we're all here, thank you for your attendance tonight. You have your agenda before you for tonight's meeting. You have a moment to review that and we'll accept a motion on that if it's of convenience.
Chairman, move to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda for tonight.
I'd like to add something to it also.
Okay, all right, let's get a second and then, it's a second by David Hub, okay? All right, so we do have the possibility of an addition, what?
It's a company discussion of the bridges that have been out at Devers Hill Road.
Okay, all right.
Just for discussion with some of the hopefully upcoming new hire possibly we're gonna have.
Okay. You want to add the number ten, discussion of Devers Hill Road Bridge, is that correct? That would require, that has been a motion by me, Commissioner Jacobs, that we have a second to that amendment to the agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a second for that, all right, any questions about that? Okay, all in favor of that addition? Okay, unanimous, so it does pass, all right? So now we have the other bridge motion, which is adopt the agenda, which this time would be with addition of item number ten, in Devers Hill Road. So all in favor? All right, we have our agenda for tonight's meeting. Item number three is approval of the minutes, that's in your packet. Give you a moment to review those.
Mr. Chairman, move to adopt the minutes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cox to adopt the minutes from the last meeting, I have a second. A second by Commissioner Hubbard. Any questions or comments about those? If not, all in favor? All right, motion passes. Right, next item is approval of claims, you have those claims in your packet as well. The claim total for this period is ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, I would go over the significant ones, general fund, twenty-four thousand, one of six. And the other is road construction fund, it's sixty-nine thousand three sixty. In a total of ninety-seven thousand eight twenty-seven-two. I'm going to turn and entertain a motion, when you have time to review. I have a motion to accept the claims by Commissioner Hughes. A second, a second by Commissioner Cox. I need questions. Okay, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. All right, we'll go on to business for tonight's meeting. Item number one, title is where's the money? At our, and I will speak to that and in the production of any information that the commission would have had. At the May twelfth meeting, there was discussion about monies that was acquired through the sale of equipment by Fayette County. So let me give you a little background on that. When I first came into office, not knowing a lot about county government, trying to just understand where we were as a government and our assets, I asked for a list of all the equipment as it related to our construction, road construction division, that being obviously graders, trucks, dump trucks, any type of equipment that related to the operations there. And what I found was pretty appalling. Most of it was pre-two thousand, and this was, would have been in two, twenty nineteen, that I asked for that report. Basically what had happened is because of the lack of revenue, the commission did not have the ability to reinvest into equipment, so I use the term that we had basically cannibalized ourselves. So, you know, didn't have really any clue as to how we worked out from that, because the revenues had not changed significantly, but I knew that we were going to have a deep part, and we're going into debt very significantly, which we also, also don't really have means to pay for. I didn't really have a clue, and then comes along, guess what? Covid, Covid was a very, very terrible thing, it cost a lot of lives, and it was a very traumatic thing for all of us to go through. But during that period of time, as you all know, there was a lot of revenue that was from money that was thrown around at that time. And one of that was a significant amount of money that was allotted to counties, and it was based on population as most of the time things, you know, are, and as it relates to county and how they funded us. So, we received somewhere, I think the ones that have been here, a little over eight million dollars, thereabouts, in Covid money, we received some of that, but the big chunk that came in was approximately eight to ten million dollars. So this, the commission at that time, and some of the individuals here were, were a part of that commission, wisely in my opinion, decided this is our opportunity. Didn't have the money to do it, so let's, let's buy real quick. And so we moved on the process of buying new dump trucks, road graders, mold masks, which does the, works up trimming the sides of the roads, et cetera, you know, other things. We had a chip spreader, it's the truck, and just a, but, but, almost all of our monies went for equipment, which I think was a very wise use, it was, it was approved by the fed, federal government, because it was federal money, so we had approved it, so it was approved, that purchase was. So that gave us this opportunity, okay? So then it left us with this equipment we talked about, you know, what we're going to do with it. So the only way equipment of the county, any ownership of equipment or anything, any asset of the county, the only way that it can be sold is by the commission being in the surplus and then it being sold, okay? So the commission surplus a number of items that were, I say dated equipment, and it was sold, okay? And the amount that it brought was somewhere approximately four hundred thousand dollars, okay? The desire of that money, that's the, that, that desire is very, very key here. The desire of what to do with that money was this. The desire was that a lot of, we can buy very competitively as it relates to certain pieces of equipment. Dump trucks, motor graders, road graders, those types of things, and a very good way to keep your equipment from getting old again is to quickly sell that piece of equipment. Because we can buy so competitively, you can sell those at auction and get most of your money back. So the desire of that money was going to be see money to do that, to get that process done. Now, there was not a motion by this commission of that, but that was pretty much the consensus of the commission, again, y'all speak, I don't want to speak for anyone here, but that was pretty much the consensus and desire, that that was a good, good process, okay? So the equipment that we had was sold. It was sold in three methods, it was sold locally by Joe Maddes Auction, actually a good portion of it was sold there. First of all, they can say that there was an established value of that, we just didn't set up whatever it brought. There was an established value that the commission fell for it, and it was done by research, engineering department was very involved with that. So, so there was that method of selling through Joe Maddes Auction. Then we went to a larger market, it's called JM Wood. JM Wood is a, Woods is a very large auction house, it might come huge, they, they're online, they can go nationwide with it, and they sell a lot of equipment. And the third method of it was gov deals, okay? So that's where the equipment was sold. All of that money then would come into the road construction account, because that's where originally that equipment was purchased, although it's many years ago, that's where it was got. And anything you sell, you have to relate back to where it came from, because that's where the money has to go. We can't just take money and say, well, we sold for a thousand dollars, I'm gonna take that, I'm gonna put it in general part. We can't do that, we're gonna put it in the health sector, we can't do that. It had to go back into road construction. It's documented paper here that, that shows where it went into the account, anybody's welcome to look at, you know, those numbers, and that is where the money came into. In December of last year, after the equipment was sold, each commissioner, but Commissioner Brandy said she did not get it, was handed this document by the engineer, okay? The engineer handed this to everyone, y'all seen the document, okay? All right, so, and on this document, it clearly states under here, under additional revenues, gov deals, ninety-six thousand, you know, JM Wood amount, and Joe Maddes. So that was the, presented to every commissioner again back in December. So the problem with the, the only, this all is a good story tonight, okay? The problem is, we are way underfunded, I'm just gonna tell you as it relates to most operations of our, our county. Especially as it relates to road construction. This is how, and, and, and again, this is a long story, but I hope it's worth it, and y'all shut me down if y'all want to, but, okay? But you need to understand how we fund the road construction department, almost entirely by gas taxes, okay? All right, so you say, well, gas tax, there's all, there's two cent gas tax, there's a four cent gas tax, there's a three, and by what is, and quite honestly, all those, you know, we spent certain ways, so I'm not gonna bore you with all these other funds and all the way we do it, but just think, gas taxes, okay? All right, it's not by the tax or what's sold in Fayette County, no? It's, it's a total from the state, every gallon of gas that's sold in the state, gallon of diesel, is pooled together, okay? And it initially goes to the state, okay? And guess what? The state keeps a big portion of it, see, Valerie didn't ask her about her big salaries, so, I'm teasing Valerie, you know that. But it's, it's the state, it's their portion of it. And then there's a division to the counties. Well, guess how, what that division and how they do that? Population, well, guess where we suffer? Population. And so, we have the same amount of people, this is a story y'all, some of y'all heard, and I'm gonna preach, and I keep on preaching, though. We have the same amount of road budget now, and for y'all does that number as Shelby County, okay? We have an almost proposition that we have fewer bridges, but not a great number less of bridges than Shelby County. Shelby's County road construction budget from the gas tax is fifteen times ours. Fifteen times. And I would tell you that work on our roads, it is not cheaper here than it is in Shelby County. You know, that, that, you know, the cost of the work on the road is, is going to be the same. It's a tremendous challenge. I say all that to say, this four hundred thousand dollars went into road construction. It was consumed by the operations of the road construction, okay? Not the intent of the money, but it wasn't misspent, it wasn't misappropriated, it wasn't, you know, it was, it was not used in the manner that we wished to use it, okay? And that's, that's it, but we had to have a balanced budget. That's, that's a statute, it's a rule. So instead of having a huge deficit, this money was spent, so it brought us to about a break even. Now, in my mind, we still want money, because that was money we intended to use it. But that's what happened to the four hundred thousand dollars that was collected on the sale of surplus equipment, and there was never any, any question of it being missing, there was never any question of it being misspent in a way that couldn't be spent. It's just the fact that we did, could not, because of our limited revenue, because of the fact that, you know, we owed, that we had more expenses in the road construction budget than we had budgeted for, it had to be used from that. So that's the, that's the whole fact to it. Where was the money spent as far as, what's, you know, there's the two large expense in the road construction budget, as in most places. Number one, personnel. Number two, supplies. Now, we'll say that we have a little extra expenditure in supplies, because we had some COVID grants going on, and we hope to recruit some of that money this year to kind of soften that, that we had to give up. But that's the entire story on where the money is. I will defer to any commissioner that wants to make comment.
I, I would like to, Mr. Chairman, I would say, you know, something to consider, I work in the banking business, working in credit union, and, you know, it's not as simple when you get into government funding and government, how government's funded is when you get a bank statement at the end of the month, and you have debit credits and a balance at the end. Maybe you got a deposit account and you got some interest on there, but that's pretty simple. It's very, very confusing, as the chairman alluded to, you know, there are funds, different revenue streams we get, that in one fund you can buy a herbicide truck, but you can't buy herbicide. And the other fund, you can buy herbicide, but you can't pay the road hands, and it's, it's very convoluted, but I say all that to say this, we have three controls we, we go through for your money. We have internal controls through our county administrator, Ms. Nancy Hodge, who does a fantastic job. We also are examined annually by code of Alabama by the examiners of public accounts. We also have a third-party outside auditing agency that audits our books. So, I, you know, I, I would encourage you to, those are all matters of public record, you can see those. We just had an accident interview today that is, I'm not gonna speak to yet because it's not finalized, but a very, very good report. But I will say that there is no one on this commission that is trying to hide anything, no one on this commission is taking that money. I used to keep a log of calls from people in my district, I quit keeping it after I got over three hundred, but I bet I've gotten thirty or forty calls about, about where's the money, and I've answered those calls, but I appreciate Nancy, I appreciate the chairman for getting that together. No one is, is trying to do anything nefarious, all this is public record, and we're audited left, right, up and down with all of your taxpayer money, so that's all I wanted to say.
Good, all right. All right, thank you, and again, thank y'all for your interest in being here, and I hope you take that information, any questions? I would hesitate to reach out to any of us, and we'd be glad to explain to you in detail whatever you would like to hear, so. Okay, I'm not, we'll move on to item number two. That's an appointment of Kay Lutens to the Tri-County AID Board of Directors. This is the Tri-County Agency for Intellectual, Intellectual Disabilities, I'm sorry about that. And they have asked us to consider the appointment of Kay Lutens to that board. If y'all are not familiar with Ms. Lutens, she's a parent of a child that has intellectual development disabilities, CP, I think, is, is a former CP is what she has. I actually know these individuals, I did not know this was even coming, and sure didn't make the recommendation, but I will speak since I do know this family. They're, they're a very, very good family, and they, they do an excellent job with their child and disability she has. I think having that perspective, and you can see the second page, I just noticed it, where there was an interest expressed in him for this board, and he kind of tells you why on that, and even speaks about his daughter. But, but like I say, they are recommended, recommending that we appoint him to this board. All right, I have a motion, I have a second, okay, by Commissioner Jacobs, all right, any questions? Okay, all in favor? All right, motion unanimous, thank you. All right, we move on to item number three, sales tax holiday, as you know, the sales tax holiday that will be coming up, it's just not getting out, it will be coming before you know it, so we get ahead of that. We want to go ahead and see the commission's desire on this. My, my, I believe I remember Nancy, that fact that this commission actually voted that we were going to continue to stay on, and so I think we're just, we're willing to be safeguarding this time and make sure, so. But let's go ahead and take the motion, I'm counting on Commissioner Hubbard, and Commissioner Jacobs, a second, so. Any questions? If not, all in favor? Okay, all right, thank you. So we'll move on to the next item, which is the hours of operations at the county dug, so we want to speak to that.
I had asked the administrator to put that on the agenda, and, and just as a, I don't want to take any action, and I was hoping the road superintendent would be here, where he could offer some input, so we may just bump that to our next meeting. But essentially what I want to do is look at our hours of operation, I know we're paying one employee overtime, you know, twenty-five plus dollars an hour to sit at the dump on Saturdays, so maybe we can move around some, some employees, or use some temporary or part-time employees, but just wanted to take a look at that, but I would like to hold off until the road superintendent is here, if that's okay with the rest of the commission.
Okay, all right, so we'll defer that. Turn to the next meeting, please. Item number five, safety action plan.
Yes, so this item, the Interior Department is just seeking authorization for the chair to sign a letter of support, supporting the West Alabama Regional Commission to go ahead and apply for a safety action grant. So there's some additional documentation in the packet, but basically, West Alabama Regional Commission has taken this upon themselves to support the seven counties in their jurisdiction of West Alabama. This plan will not require any monetary match from any of the local governments. We just have to commit to being an active participant and maintain the safety of our roads and our public assets. You can also see down there in the second to last sentence, this will not only give us another tool to use on our, our own grant applications and all work associated with those, but also it will allow us to be able to go through and apply for SS four-eight implementation money, which again can be used to improve any of the safety of our roads, including guardrails, signs, et cetera.
Mr. Chairman, move to adopt the safety action plan.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Brandy, okay, any questions? Okay, not, all in favor? Okay, thank you, moving on. This will be held as well, the rebuild, we did, have some rebuild bids come in, and so we want to speak to a lot of the bidders.
So we had three bidders, and the final bid calculation is also in your packet. The Interior Department would recommend that we award this to the lowest bidder, which was ST Bunn. We would also recommend specifically that we would award them the base and the alternate bids, that would be including the County Road Twenty-One North project, since it was, they came in under our rebuild budget for the year. Noting, I know I had some questions about the rebuild Alabama grant last time, so we are still in the running for the rebuild grant. They are going to award round two, mid to late June, and then round three in September. So we would go ahead and award the base and the alternate, but we would pause and delay the notice to proceed that we sent out to ST Bunn. That way, all the work for County Road Twenty-One is going to, like, be on hold until after the rebuild grants are awarded. If we go ahead and start work on it, we're not going to be eligible for the money. So just something else that I wanted to make sure that that the commission was aware of on the, of the awards.
Haley, if, if, just a quick question, on County Road Twenty-One, I know when we passed this rebuild plan for this year, it seems like it was a hundred years ago now, but we had talked about it, and currently from our own Commissioner Hughes, I know this is on over a three-year period, we wanted to start on, on the District One end, which is the small side, and then move toward, north toward Commissioner Hughes' section of County Road Twenty-One. We had said we would put County Road Twenty-One on this year's, you know, barring that we had some, some money left over, so we do have money left over, but we're hope, so, so we're gonna do that section, but we will do more if we get the grant, in layman's terms, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Yes, sir, that was my only question, thank you. I move to adopt the award, or move to give the rebuild bid to ST Bunn, the lowest bidder.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any question? If not, all in favor? Okay, unanimous, okay, moving on to our next item, would be hiring a new engineer, I assume it's Commissioner Cox. Okay, I'm sorry, the next item is appraisal of grocery store building, and that's Commissioner Rogers.
Yes, sir, Mr., we, I've been thinking about this building over here, this part of my, over here across the street. We've bought, the county's owned that building since two thousand and fifteen or sixteen, and it ain't been used for nothing, for somebody's storage. And I, I feel like that somebody needs to buy it and use it, put something in it. I mean, that can just be more money for the county. It's been sitting there since two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. I'd like to make a recommendation to get an appraisal, to see what it's worth.
Okay, and I think Commissioner Rogers, you also think that you possibly have someone that can express an interest?
Yeah, I got, I got a prospect looking at it.
Okay, all right, so, so Commissioner Rogers would like to get the approval, to have an appraisal done of the Shop and Save Grocery Store Building. Do I, do you expect that in form of a motion, and a second by Commissioner Hughes, okay? Any questions about that? Obviously, that's all, we all have to come back to this commission, we're going to actually, just, just be getting appraised, so. All in favor of that? Okay, it passes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a hiring of a new engineer, and I'm having Commissioner, I asked Commissioner Cox to speak to that.
Sure, so we had a vacancy in our engineering department, our engineer had left to pursue a, some other opportunities, and certainly wishing the best of luck, but as you all know, engineers, it's a small, small world, especially when you get into county government. There's sixty-seven counties, and there's sixty-seven county engineers, so it's a very small pool to draw from. Commissioner Hubbard, Commissioner Rogers, and Commissioner Brandy and myself comprised a committee that interviewed four candidates for that position, four very highly qualified candidates. I've actually sat in on that process before, and, and I don't know that, I don't know that we've ever had that high quality of a stable of candidates, so we, we really had some tough decisions to make. I want to thank the rest of the committee for their commitment, we did this during weeknights, whenever we can work these folks in. Commissioner Brandy came up with a really fantastic rubric, and I'm gonna get to that in just a second, about their qualifications and, and how much money they could save the county, this, that, and the other, but we have narrowed in on the candidates, and I spoke with him today, he is still interested in Mr. Ben Snipes. We would like to, I'm gonna make this in the form of a motion, but I do want to just mention that Ben is a, currently works for the Alabama Department of Transportation, but was the assistant county engineer here in Fayette County under Mr. Bobby McGraw for about four or five years, so. Ben has county government experience, he, he checks all the boxes. We are going to be able to hire Ben in with seventy percent of his salary reimbursed from State of Alabama. So total cost for his salary to the county with benefits is just over sixty thousand dollars a year. But the great thing about this candidate is he's able to do bridge inspections, as well as waste management plans and things of that nature, which will save the county at least forty thousand, probably closer to sixty thousand dollars a year. So we're almost coming out at a net zero for this hire, so I think that's a great move financially. Highly qualified individual, highly recommended. So I will make the motion to hire Mr. Ben Snipes as our new county engineer, and we'll be glad to answer any questions.
I second that motion. I have a second by Commissioner Brandy, okay? Any questions? As it stated, each commissioner had an opportunity to come to, and any and all of the interviews, and I think many did, and so many of the individuals sitting before you had an opportunity to visit with Mr. Snipes, and so that's the gentleman that they all seem to be very much behind. So that's the motion that's before this group, and I'll do this in my roll call, just so we can see. All right, so Commissioner Brandy?
Uh, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Jacobs?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hubbard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Okay, our motion carries. Thank you for that. All right, I'm going to move really Devers Hill Road tonight, executive session to ten, so we're moving on to Devers Hill Road. Commissioner Jacobs?
Yes, I guess it's been about five years ago, the county inadvertently accidentally destroyed a bridge on the Devers Hill Road, you know, and also a dump truck in the process. And the previous, and, and the reason I bring this up is I've been getting conflicting information from the previous engineers, and I just want to get it out there, and Haley may be able to actually clearly inform you more, so. But I was understanding that since we destroyed it, that it would not have to be something that came before a vote to look at repair, because it was, you know, it wasn't like an act of nature, it was an act of error. But I know with the incoming engineer, you know, it should be something else to do with him, you know, talk to him about, but we need to try to move forward as quickly as possible, trying to come up with some type of solution for that.
Yeah, I believe Jared had one before he left, so absolutely we'd be able to jump in day one on that.
Okay, because that's part of my issue with him, is that he had told me that they were, you know, that it wouldn't have to come before a vote, that David just stayed in the process, and
That's not something I'm privy to, I know that part.
Right, you know, and then he, I know he's told people that on property, that it would have to be brought before the commission before it could be replaced.
It, it would have to be within the budget, I mean, obviously, you know, it is something we'd have to budget for, so maybe since we, we'll be starting not that far down the road, not all in the budget for next year, it may be something that, we look at the allocation of that, so it would have to be budgeted.
Right.
But obviously, we do not spend funds that's going to drive us, because I don't know a clue to expense lines, but it could be significant. So it just, you know, and I have to, have to motion, but, you know, other than that, come before it come to the commission, no, not specifically, it would have to be within the budget, though.
I just want to make sure that's a priority as soon as possible, at least get the people on property, get some answers, and, you know, just work a little harder in keeping that road maintained, because it's become a lot of issues. and, you know, just work a little bit harder on keeping that road maintained, because it's become a lot of issues.
Absolutely.
I know the sun set behind you, it's been cutting trees down, re-rigger here lately, and it's just a mess.
All right, so, the redoubt, see a vote is necessary, we have this, okay? So, we'll, any questions about that, any comments? Okay, if not, we will move to the next session in just a second. We'll go ahead and ask for a round table. Okay, we'll start, we'll start down at the end, Commissioner Brandon.
Oh, wow. I just want to thank everyone for being here. It's nice to see a room full of people that's interested in county government. Just wanted to express my appreciation for each and every one of you deciding to come to the meeting tonight. And again, please come in the future, it's kind of nice, really.
Okay.
I agree, it's nice to have an audience. Stoker, do not leave before you get that thumb drive from me. If you do, it's not my fault to you. And thank you again for all that you're doing.
Commissioner Rogers?
Appreciate everybody coming out tonight, don't let this be your last one. But, I have nothing in about two weeks, just come on back out. Thank you.
Commissioner Hubbard?
I feel as I'm, good to see a room full of people. The only thing I will add is, I appreciate all the hard work of all of the county employees.
All right, Commissioner Hughes? Appreciate, good to see all of you.
Commissioner Cox? I think everything that could be said has already been said, but I will echo Commissioner Brandon. It's kind of like teaching Sunday school, I think it's a lot easier to teach to fifty people versus ten people. So, it's good to have you here tonight, this is your money, this is your government. We work for you, not the other way around, so thank you for your interest. Our meetings are on our social media, every, most all meetings are on there. The assistant engineer, we work to get a YouTube, or a YouTube channel for those longer meetings. So, thank you for that, Haley. We will be fully transparent with the taxpayers of Fayette County. So, thank you for being here. If you can't join us live, join us on our social media.
Okay, I want to ask questions from media, Devin?
I just have one.
Okay.
I just wanted to ask if y'all would like to, in regards to the letter, letter to the editor, that was in the June fourth edition, would you, Haley, like to make a comment or response on that?
I, you know, I would love that individual, I'm trying to remember if the article I read it.
I'll get it.
Okay, yeah, so, regarding that?
Regarding roads that were, if I'm not mistaken, if I read it correctly, some about roads that were publicly navigated, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, the only response back to that, because, yeah, I was referencing that until I've been popular lately. So, so that, the reason that Newton Road cannot be discussed here has been informed by of legal action. Because it was legal action, this, we can't discuss actions, is that right? Let me defer to our attorney, Mr. Kretowski, as it relates to Newton Road, that's what the question was.
That must have been supposed to have, a testament of the court, nothing, a panel can do to help.
Yeah, so that's when he said he didn't decline to speak. He was invited to speak, actually, he called to speak, he was told he could not speak on Newton Road. And he shows up, it was told to him again that he could not, because it's a matter of legal action, and he decided to leave at that time.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you for that, and I want to speak to something as well, and it relates to the last meeting, and the article that appeared in the paper regarding our last meeting. And as you are aware, and it was chaotic at the time, definitely, the whole thing, but I would like to seek some clarity and some clarification, and not retraction, but whatever you're doing, you correct saying that, hey, this was incorrect and not that. And that relates to what I personally said at the meeting. And I did not support the forty-three percent increase in pay that was given to the roads supervisor. I was very adamant about that upfront. Not anything against him, it's truly a financial concern. As I talked earlier about our constraints as it relates to money, to also kind of show you where we are, with it's some of the smallest county in the state of Alabama in revenue, okay? So, we do not have the luxury to be able to do and make a lot of, we have to be effective and very efficient with the monies we have, let's just put it that way. And I think that said in the article that I disappointed, and I did not, and if you need any clarity about, we will, and I know that you had it on your phone, because we listened to it in your office as well. And I really thought I might see a clarification before and after, but again, I would just appreciate that if you do that. Okay, all right, so anything else before we go into executive session?
I haven't read that at all, but I'll get your paper, so I'll be fine.
Okay, so, all right, so, do you have a motion going to executive session? Someone?
No, I'm saying.
Second, all in favor, okay? All right, well, thank you.